This meeting of Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier.
Here.
Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Here.
Councilman Weiner.
There.
Councilman Tenon.
Here.
Councilman Dennis.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the two young children who lost their lives today. Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bills total two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-four cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ms. Pippen called and she is a family member of the children and will not be able to make it tonight.
Okay. So we have no remarks of visitors this evening. We'll move right on into bids. The water department for North Third to North Adams and water line and service taps. Can I have a staff report, please?
So this is exactly what you called it. It is just the parts that we need for the water main from North Third to North Adams. It's the water line, service taps, as well as and you'll see that we've got to have eight inch gate valve, gaskets, everything included with putting the water main in. And cheapest price put us at nine thousand three hundred and three dollars and eighteen cents.
Is there any discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the bid from Schulte Supply in the sum of nine thousand three hundred and three dollars and eighteen cents to do the work.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Motion passes. Purchase what you need. We also have a bid tonight from the building department for vehicle purchase. Staff report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, this is a bid for, uh, the two thousand twenty-four Ford Escape. Uh, it's put together by Pettis Ford in DeSoto. It's the Sourcewell State Procurement Program Price. Uh, that came in at thirty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars. The, uh, we budgeted forty thousand for it, so we're well under budget. Um, this will complete our fleet. We started last year with two uh Jeeps last year and this will complete our fleet.
Discussion.
Uh, there's four. Yes, sir.
Mark, for the seven thousand that's left over approximately, can that be used for like in-service laptops, make it easier on the field crews or they can pull up plans, anything like that in the vehicle? Cause I'm seeing the county inspectors having it and they're raving about it.
You all actually approved that, uh, last year and we have the iPads right now. We're yeah, and then they are great. Those are one of the best things that we've ever done, honestly.
Please strike that in the minutes there, Leah.
Mark, I hope them laptops are working out very well and thank you for saving the city seven thousand dollars.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve uh, the bid of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and sixty-four dollars from, um, Pettis Ford on a Sourcewell bid. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Motion passes. Go ahead, Mark. Get your vehicle.
All right. Thank you all.
And we have one more bid from the Public Works Department. Well, actually there's two. The first one is for the salt storage building and water equipment building. Staff report.
So this is for both of the buildings. It would include the design as well as construction services for getting it built. Uh, we're looking at a mix here where the salt building would be the stack stone Lego block build with a cloth canopy top. And then the water equipment storage building, we're currently talking about the possibility of a metal building. But it would have more options as far as the, the, uh, visibility with it being there abutting the, uh, adjacent lots. So currently the salt storage bin, uh, we have a salt storage building, however, previous winters we had run low and if we're running low, everyone else is running low. And that makes purchasing a worry for us. And so with this, it would be an overflow when it came to it. We wouldn't be actively working out of that salt storage bin. We would work out of the one in Public Works. And then whenever it got low, we would truck it with our own trucks to that one. Uh, it would be refilled whenever we bought a barge of salt. And we would make sure that it was completely enclosed. And part of the reason for picking the lagoon lot was it's still currently uh, surrounded by fence with barbed wire. So just making sure no one tries to get into the salt building. As there's not really much else that would be out there. Uh, the water building, we have several pieces of equipment and hydrants pipe that are sitting out in the sun right now. We don't have a good place for the storage. We do have some shelving in the public works building, but that's where we are keeping things that have to be out of the sun and there's only so much room we have there. And so with doing some of these larger replacements like we're starting to get into, uh, we just need a place where we can start storing more of the pipe so we can just continue doing the work without having to wait for being uh, refilled on all of our needs.
And that allows us to buy like the whole, a whole barge load, as I recall.
Yes.
So it's cheaper and we've got it. Yeah.
How, when do you expect starting and finish of this project?
We want to start by August and we would like to finish by October, November.
Uh, both of them or just?
Both of them.
Both of them.
Right now, the, the issue that I've been told is for the salt storage building, it's the uh, members holding the fabric roof, the block should be easy enough to get a hold of. But then for the equipment storage building, depending upon how like what aesthetics we would want to get on the building, there's then a backlog on ordering certain portions of metal buildings to get those built. And so we're still very early, but I mean, we're wanting to aim for November. And it sounds like Cochran is fairly confident we can get there so long as there's nothing outstanding that really holds up, uh, ordering materials.
Mike, stupid question, but I swear I'll get phone calls. Um, Mark, everything's to code, right? We're not like, that's how I always will make sure, cause.
Yeah, good job on, uh, getting this to where it is, because I know that as a council, we've been talking about this for seven, eight years at least, you know, and as far as having to pay overages on prices during peak demand times is not the most efficient way to go because we didn't have the storage. So I'm happy to see this happen.
On the building, as far as the storage, is there a room for expansion for future possibilities?
For the, uh, water equipment?
Yes. Or anything really that might come in.
You're out of room down there, Bobby. It, it's on the, it's on the fifth street lot, so.
Well, I know that. I'm in. Is there any room down, we're, we're doing salt storage. Is there any room down there that we could possibly expand some extra storage?
So, um, I guess in my own mind, the master plan for that area was we can put this salt storage building and it's going to be there at the front, but it's going to be to the west side. So we should still have some cover from trees. Not as many people being able to see it from the neighboring houses. But that at least gets us an entrance. We'll get a concrete entrance that can support big trucks. And then from there, that kind of opens up the rest of that lot. So I think that expansion would be a big part of that lot. And this is just kind of a nice start to it.
Yeah. That's why I was looking at it when I was looking at that. So I figured possible, there's possibilities, hopefully.
Is that going to be built on, uh, where the lagoon was?
Yes.
You guys aren't worried about, uh, uh, fill and all that? Cause that was never compacted or anything?
So that'll be part of, I guess Cochran's testing. But, uh, the portion that we have it backed up to, and I think we had a map at the very back, but it's in black and white, so it's probably hard for you to read it. Uh, a big portion of that where the building would be sitting hasn't been built in yet. So we are feeling, we would have to bring in fills. We feel pretty good about where we'd set the building itself. Uh, where we would be concerned about the compaction is where we would put the concrete drive in. And we would get that tested.
The other question I have is why, why a cloth, uh, roof?
They make just a, it is a cheap attachment that then can bolt to those blocks rather than trying to fit a structural move to it. And so it's really more so price, but it's just become very popular nowadays with DOTs.
So it's just like stacked, uh, the, the two by two by four block?
Hmm.
So temp, uh, so it's a temporary structure, basically.
It still has wind shear calculations to it that will pass mark hopefully. But, uh, it's still, uh, it's still going to be a permanent structure, but it's that the top is very easy to install. I mean, they'll have it in a day.
What's the longevity of the top?
So I actually had to go through building one of these whenever I was in the city of Belton. Uh, I was told fifteen years. Uh, currently it sounds like it has had very little wear and tear from what I heard just a few months ago. I had to call over to see how it was holding up since we were talking about it here. So it sounds like they are pretty accurate with the longevity on those of fifteen. And they promise, or I had one vendor promise twenty years, but we would have to see about that.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to exceed to, oh, build two buildings, a stor- salt storage building and a water equipment building for forty-three thousand four hundred dollars not to exceed.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Motion has passed. And we have one more bid. This is for the two thousand twenty-four asphalt overlay program. Lowest bidder was joggers paving and contracting for five hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ten cents. Staff report, please.
So, uh, we had kind of touched on this. This is going to be the asphalt overlay and we're looking at Pounds Road, Gammel Cemetery and that section of Shapiro Drive. Uh, we are also looking at North Creek. We've talked with Jokers. They are very open to a additional change order to add concrete work to this. And so we got a very good price on asphalt as well. Uh, so this is not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. Their bid was five hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. And so the hope is that we would spend up to that limit or as much as we can to just hit any other roads that might be deemed part of the list from the pavement maintenance program. Just to make sure we get every bit of the bang for our buck that we got out of this bid for this year.
If you recall, uh, the last couple of years, we've approached asphalt overlay like this. Uh, the bids have come in below our budgeted amount. You approved the seven twenty-five for this fiscal year. Uh, so we've been able to just put the extra amount directly back into some additional streets.
Before I forget Greg and Mike, I apologize. I guess I could say in the comments, talk to Randy Casey. I ran into him on a covert project. They're going to do some overlaying evidently close to our road and he said, if we can partner with them, they'll bid it and we can get their unit cost. I think I said that right. So there you go.
I think he's going to, I think, I think you and I talked about, he was going to do some sections of West Main. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Was that that section Harrison Lake?
Yeah, from Harrison Lake up.
West Main, yeah.
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 Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve not up, not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for our asphalt overlay program this year.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Motion has passed. We'll go on into ordinances and resolutions. Tonight we have bill forty-seven seventy-four on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number four seven seven four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a design build contract with Aquatics Capri Pools for a splash pad at Larry G. Kreid's Memorial Park, incorporating said proposal as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven seventy-four is open for discussion.
Here comes the staff report.
Yep, here comes the staff report.
So finally here with the splash pad design. So between park board, staff and the design committee, we have finalized a plan for the splash pad at Larry G. Kreid's Park, AKA Turtle Cove. Um, originally we had a budget of one point five million for the splash pad and the all-inclusive playground. So Aquatics would be our design firm and the supplier of the fixtures for three hundred ninety thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and Capri Pools would be the contractor installer for a cost of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which brings our total to eight hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars with contingencies for the splash pad build.
What do you, what do you do with that thing in the winter? Do you gotta put some manifreeze in it or something?
Just winterize. It's, it is a drain to waste system. So we're not doing the reclaimer system that we originally had. The equipment is just going to be way too costly. And we have good range there anyways, so it's not going to be that big of a deal. So it'll basically be just like any other winterizing, turn off, drain out.
Gotcha.
And we're good. If need be, yeah.
Was the price, uh, for the splash pad and the playground or is that just a splash?
Splash pad.
Okay, then the playground will come later.
Yes, sir.
So that leaves us what?
Six hundred. Yeah.
Yeah. Or a little more. Okay, good.
What were we estimating on the, on the playground?
We really were kind of waiting for the splash pad to be finished, so we can kind of see where we can go from there. Um, we're still kind of working on design of that, but we should be, we should be all right. Yes.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any council member that would like to have bill forty-seven seventy-four placed on the agenda for the next meeting? If not, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven seventy-four for the second time and title only?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven seventy-four for the second time?
Bill number four seven seven four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a design build contract with Aquatics Capri Pools for a splash pad at Larry G. Kreid's Memorial Park, incorporating said proposal as part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date. Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven seventy-four has passed.
Thank you all.
We also have bill forty-seven seventy-five on the agenda for this evening. Madam Clerk, would you please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number four seven seven five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Joker's Paving and Contracting, Inc. For the two thousand twenty-four asphalt overlay program, incorporating said contract as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Staff report. It's open for discussion. Can I have a staff report?
If you want Michael to get up and talk to you again about the overlays, otherwise this is the contract for the bid you just accepted.
What was it again?
Is there any council member that would like this bill, uh, forty-seven seventy-five be placed on the agenda for the next uh, meeting? Hearing none, do I entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven seventy-five for the second time and title only?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven seventy-five for the second time?
Bill number four seven seven five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Joker's Paving and Contracting, Inc. For the two thousand twenty-four asphalt overlay program, incorporating said contract as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date. Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Collier.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven seventy-five has passed. Do we have any new business?
No, sir.
Do we have any old business?
No, sir.
Councilman Boyer.
I'd like to say that, uh, Memorial Day services that was put on now, everybody's earth to beach and it's right to work. It seemed like it went well. Uh, like I seen a veteran turnout. November eleventh, they're going to have Veterans Day after the park. The elders are going to be putting that on. If there's some way that we can get that maybe put in the letter. Concerning, concerning that. If it's open to the public. Mark? It's six sixteen barber place, I believe it is, um, um, is he, is he allowed to be living in there yet?
No.
It's work only?
It's work on.
People living downstairs and people living upstairs?
We, uh, we were there, uh, two weeks ago, just through the building and there was no signs of anyone, there are no beds, no clothes, no.
Guy lives at the end of the street. He come down here and they've been using his trash cans. So he took a bunch of their stuff out of the trash cans and moved it back in the plot and took his cans.
Yeah, we'll check into it again.
There's some issues there. You, you wouldn't mind, sir? Uh, let's see, uh, down in front of the library for the mayor's crews, they really cleaned that up nice down the sidewalks and on the lot and everything. So that's a good thing to see there is we got to get that fixed. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilman Collier.
Surprised. By surprise here. I noticed that the, uh, new apartments up there off American Legion are starting to lease apartments already, which is a good thing. And I know what answer I'm going to get, but have we had any word on the property next to that on what's going to be coming in or anything going on there?
No, sir.
Nope. That's what I thought. And, uh, I did receive, uh, an email from the committee for the Juneteenth celebrations, which will be coming up in June. And I think that looks like it's going to be a good, good thing. And I think we ought all to think about taking, uh, part in that and, uh, joining them. And that's all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Templeton.
Just, uh, very excited to see that the splash pad, Turtle Cove, pickleball courts, all of these things are coming to fruition. We'll be here before we know it, but also wanted to thank whoever is in charge of the updates on the Festus Facebook page. Because they have not snuck, sniped back at anybody who's tossing out comments about the eons that it's taking, according to them, to get Main Street fixed. But people that I talk to that don't post on Facebook, I'll understand it's a progress. It's a work in progress. It's going to take time to get it done, but I think having that extra, because we, we keep talking about that as transparency and being open with people. And I think that all makes a difference. So just glad to see that we have, uh, have things in progress.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Weiner.
I think what Councilwoman Templeton said voices my, uh, opinion also. Um, one more thing, uh, Greg, thank you on your, on the, um, on the city's webpage where we have the capital outlays or capital projects rather, um, and where they are, when they'll, when they'll start, when they'll be finished and so on. I think that's really a nice uh, addition to it for the, for the public to be able to see. So thank you for that.
All righty. Councilman Vins.
Uh, not really too much, sir. I'm just glad to see, like everybody said, the progress is going on, the
microphone.
Sorry about that. Glad to see everything moving along. I mean, it's nice to, the progress, just the roads and all the construction and everything just coming along. I, I mean, it's just really great to see Festus is doing a lot. We hear about it. People see it and it's all going to be great. I mean, I know it's a little rough, but it's going to be great at the end.
Yep. Yes, it is.
It was a you, you know, it's, and, and I know tragically today and we're sorry and but you know, you think of a Memorial Weekend, how I'm a war, I, I love my war movies and it's how sad, you know, what we had to go through back then and for freedom. So other than that, that's it. other than that, that's it, sir.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Dennis.
Got a couple of late day, uh, requests. So behind Warren off of six, there's an alley back there. Got a pretty big pothole. I don't know if we put a little bit of coal fill in there, uh. I know, I know we don't do a lot with alleys, but, uh, a lot of people that's their, you know, their off-street parking, especially in that part of town. Uh, so, so it was a pretty good sized one, but, uh, and then I had a question. So when you come down Brandon Wallace, you hit North Truman there. If you look south, that weeds and grass and everything is grown so high, you can't hardly see. Do, do they need to, to brush hog that? Or I mean, it's, we hold a pretty tight standard to town.
Development.
Yeah, I actually talked to, uh, I received complaints over the weekend. I spoke with Nathan from Double Diamond today.
Yeah.
It should be taken care of in a day or two.
Okay, yeah, I guess we, everybody plays the same people. That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Cook.
Thank you, sir. Uh, from the library, I was under the impression, if I get this right, the summer reading program signup started today. Like to get that out there. And touch and truck is this Thursday from ten to twelve. Um, Ms. Evans, nice to see you. I haven't seen you in a while. Got a little worried. So it's nice. Kevin, nice to see you in person. I think you, I think you're a huge asset and, uh, glad you're here. Uh, Chief Wendell, I know you said the staff is, uh, is off with pay. Um, I appreciate your leadership, but I really, really hope you take some time as yourself. I really do. Um, and also Captain Pippen, I know most of the council we talk and the mayor especially takes pride in leadership. Um, I can comfortably say this for all, I believe. If any employee needs anything, please let this counselor or Greg know. I don't think there's any better staff in any county in this city that we have here. And I, I promise you, we, I promise you. I was here when the, uh, when the news was announced and I got to see some of the staff members shock and horror. And I just really hope they really understand. We're here from them. And I think Greg and the mayor does, an excellent job leading this city. And I really want the employees to understand on the recorded minutes, that if they need anything, please reach out to the mayor or to Greg. Cause I am quite confident this council will back up anything, even monetary. I promise you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Tenon.
Uh, Michael, on, uh, Hawk Point and you know, like off sunshine there, they go into Hawk Point. Uh, a couple of things on Hawk Point right there. We've been trying to get lights on Hawk Point. It's, it's just a black area right through there. Um, I, I don't remember why we couldn't get it done, but can you look into that? And, uh, the other thing on Hawk Point as well, when you're coming off sunshine, and there's a huge dead area that it's a blind spot because the trees are sticking out so far. So the road comes around and then it cuts back. And, and I mean, I, I've almost had accidents there several times because you can't see the cars coming the other way. So if you could check that, I mean, I think, uh, Matt Clemens was doing some tree trimming or something there a while back, but then it just kind of stopped.
Uh, now we got our nice little, chopper.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm talking about, though?
Yes.
Okay, um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you, sir. Well, we do have the mayor's crews coming up here on, uh, Saturday evening. And it's, it's become, it's became such a, good thing that I go to the Methodist church there right at the corner. And we have a Saturday night service. And I have convinced them that for the last couple of years, to cancel the Saturday night service, it's so that, people can cruise and park on church parking lots, watch it. So they're, they're happy and I'm happy and, and, uh, it's going to be good. It's going to be good. Um, and I will, back up what Mike just had to say. Councilman Cook, uh, you know, it was, it was tragic that our responders had to, be involved in the, the happenings today and, uh, whatever they needed to do, let's, uh, let's take care of. It's unfortunate. There's no answer, no good answer for.
But I do also want to add that the fire department was there on scene today also. So they are, uh, um, JPAD did have a host of debriefing this afternoon for all of our departments. Um, and we have another one set up for this Thursday at four thirty for our officers and anybody else that want to attend also.
All right, good. Thank you, chief. If not, that's all I have.
Um, Mayor, uh, as an annual tradition, your crews, I've asked for seven, six years. If your foot's not well enough, sir, I'd be more than happy to drive your Mustang and drive you out, sir.
It's my left foot that's hurt. My right foot can operate the gas and the brakes, so I'm afraid I have to turn you down again this year, Mike. I apologize. If not, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session, pursuant to section six, ten, point zero, two, one, three, of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri for the purpose of discussing personnel. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call please.
Councilman Weiner? Councilman Tenon?
Yes.
Councilman Dennis?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilman Collier?
Yes.
Councilman Vins?
Yes.
Councilman Cook?
Yes.
Councilwoman Templeton?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll take a five-minute break and then go into closed session.